Okay, thank you. Welcome. I'd like to call this April 27th, 2020 council meeting in order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I give to the mayor. To the people. Sorry about that. My microphone is acting up. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Hazeltime.
President.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 13, 2020 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yep.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to this evening's council meeting and will again meet on May 11th. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled at this time.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled, but I have worked up an outline for the Committee for the Comprehensive Plan that in the next couple of weeks I hope to share with the planning directors so that we can get moving on that, I guess, and eventually figure out how we are going to organize meetings when we are meeting somewhat face-to-face.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled and no report at this time.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazeltime.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be meeting at the end of June, beginning of July, so we can evaluate the effects of the COVID-19 on the delinquent water bills and determine what we will do as far as relief funds for those delinquent bills.
Thank you. Emergency Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance. We have 2086 McDack grant application for the police, 2087 Chip Private Rehab 533 South Broadway, 2088 Economic Development TREX Transfer Forum Approval, 2089 Expenditure Over $15,000 for Litman Engineering, 2090 Expenditure Over $15,000 for Step Mobile Municipal Court, and 2091 Budget Amendments. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the topic of the COVID-19, City Hall will continue to have limited access. Appointments will be required to meet with staff if at all possible. Any items that may be submitted electronically or mailed are preferred. We have a box or a bin in the vestibules at both entrances to City Hall to leave mail for any city department. If the public drops them in those boxes, we'll get them to the right department. Also, we have the utility drops at the Medina Municipal Court for those that would rather pay at the box and not have to come into City Hall. If emergency access is needed without an appointment, we have the phone numbers posted at the inner City Hall doors to call the office and ask for immediate help, and then we'll send somebody there to get the constituent. Essential services to constituents will be maintained, but some services may be deferred, such as fence permits, pool permits, et cetera, to limit the exposure of the public to the staff and vice versa. We apologize for any inconvenience but want to keep all safe and stop the spread of the virus. Also, I want to thank Medina City Schools for sharing their laptops during their closure with the city, which has permitted operations from home for a number of our staff members. There are videos on the COVID-19, both for residents and businesses, at www.madinaoh, and it has the local recommendations on the COVID-19 pandemic. The governor announced today on April 27th that May 1st, all staff and visitors in any office or public building, such as ours, will have to wear masks, as well as our staff members, as well as the public. We have already posted signs on the doors to put that notice out, and we're trying to bring awareness to this so that folks don't come here and realize that they are not permitted inside without a mask. Secondly, the new parking deck is being erected immediately south of City Hall. This was supplemented by a $1 million capital grant from the state of Ohio due to our historical downtown and numerous events and activities that draw visitors from a very broad region. The deck will cost about $3.8 million, so the city is loaning or fronting the remaining $2.8 million. The city established a tax increment finance district for the areas adjacent and surrounding parking deck. The upper floor of the parking deck is scheduled to be poured with concrete in the next few weeks, and then the remainder of the deck project will continue, and we expect it to complete near the end of June. The tornado that came through town a couple of weeks ago, we had a strong storm and winds caused extreme damage in the city to numerous homes and businesses. At the last council meeting, we were still tallying up the different areas that were hit, and we had 45 locations that were moderately to severely damaged. These included 35 houses, two industrial businesses, two warehouses, and six commercial spaces. South Broadway Street between Grant and Lafayette Road, which is the brick section, is being closed for reconstruction and is partially funded by a grant. The center block crosswalks for Public Square are going out to bid, and these will include flashing lights to make the crossings safer, and these as well were funded by grant monies. The total projects, 106,000, and we received a capital grant of about 2/3 of that, $70,666 in a capital grant, and then we will match that with local funds of $35,334, and this will greatly enhance the safety. And before we move on with the department head reports, Mr. President, I'd like to turn it back over to you for a proclamation that we jointly signed.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation from the city of Medina for the 51st anniversary of Municipal Clerks' Week in recognition of Kathy Patton. This is a proclamation, Kathy, I don't know if you can see it, here it is, that's going to be given to you in your office, but I'll read it to you since we can't be together. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of a government at all levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering services to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center in functions of local government and community, and whereas the municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations, and now therefore I, Dennis Hamel, Mayor of the city of Medina, and members of the Medina City Council, do hereby recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2020, as Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Kathy Patton for her vital services she performs and her dedication to our community. Signed by the mayor and president of council. Kathy, this is for you, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, let's see who I could go to. Mr. Durham, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. A reminder that the income tax filing deadline has been pushed back to July to match with the state and feds, but income taxes will still need to be filed in July, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, the Lot Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, please, chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
It is, Chief Kiner is not there, I don't see him. How about Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
No, sir.
Nope. Mr. Mandell, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. One note, this week we are starting our concrete street repair project, which means, and that's the project to replace individual pavement panels throughout the city, starting in the northwest section of town. They'll be in town for about two months. We appreciate everyone's cooperation as far as traffic control. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the last person there is Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and petitions, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak in any issue of concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to innocent visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? I know we have one guest, Mr. Eddy.
Yes, I'm here.
You're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of council. It's good to see everybody's faces and see that everybody's staying healthy out there. I'm here tonight with regard to the request of my client, Trullium Creek LLC, to rezone the property located at 1088 South Court Street from an R3 zoning classification to the CS zoning classification that is contained within the provisions of Chapter 1131 of the city's code. I think, as everybody knows, the plan of action here with regard to this property is to improve it with an ATM kiosk that will be branded by Key Bank. There'll be some additional improvements, including the installation of a 36-foot concrete apron on South Court Street at the southern boundary of the property with a circular access drive, and those items are depicted on the site plan that we have submitted and which has previously been approved. It's our intent with regard to this rezoning to bring the zoning classification of this property into conformance with the character of the surrounding area. I think as everybody recognizes that the properties across the street are always owned C3, properties to the north, while they do maintain an R3 zoning classification, were developed commercially as a planned unit development, and there are pre-existing commercial uses on the other properties to the north that are left over from when that property was annexed from Montville Township. There, to the south in Montville Township, I'll note that there were previously some houses that existed that have all been razed, and that property is slated for commercial development as well, as well as additional commercial development to the south in Montville Township. So as you can see, this property essentially lies within the middle of a commercial zone, and for that reason, the R3 zoning classification imposes regulations that are inconsistent with the character of this area. It is effectively, from our point of view, rendered a residential use other than perhaps some form of multifamily use, and I'm not exactly sure what that would be, but it has rendered that entirely infeasible, both practically and economically. And I would note that even the city's comprehensive plan states that the zoning classification on this particular property should change. In short, as it relates to CS zoning, we think that this is an ideal location for the uses that are associated with that zoning classification, which is essentially limited business service activities. There are substantial amount of properties in this immediate area that are zoned commercial or are used with, consistent with this commercial zoning classification, and this proposed use would provide those limited business service activities at what has become a major thoroughfare, apparently, within the city in an outlined location, and therefore conform this property to the surrounding uses consistent with the intent of the code with respect to the ongoing development in this commercial corridor. Previously, there's been a lot of discussion, and the residents of Pinewood have raised concerns relative to traffic in this particular corridor. I take those concerns seriously. I don't doubt the fact that there are times during the day when it is difficult to turn out of the Pinewood development, but I would submit to this body that traffic control in this corridor is a problem that is beyond the scope of what we are considering here In this case, this is a lawful use, given the context of the surrounding area. And case law, Ohio case law recognizes where that's the case, traffic is essentially a secondary consideration. It's a legitimate consideration, but it needs to be done holistically and not with regard to a particular use that, particularly when this use isn't going to generate any traffic. There aren't, generally speaking, there are not going to be people that are traveling to this location specifically. It is designed to capture existing traffic flows. And frankly, to the extent that there is, you know, this is a highly traveled area that would honestly be one of the reasons what would make this particular spot attractive to a user like Key Bank, because their customers are driving by, and so that's, they locate in places like this. In fact, as it relates to the current R3 zoning classification, the traffic has the same effects on this property, and it's used for residential purposes as it does for the Pinewood residents. The fact that this is a commercial corridor, as I mentioned previously, is sort of bolstered by the fact that there is a lot of traffic in this area, and to the extent that there are adverse consequences to properties in the area that are zoned residential, they apply equally with respect to 1088 South Court Street in the current R3 zoning classification. In conclusion, we would request that the council approve the rezoning of the property to the CS zoning classification, and if anybody has any questions, I'm obviously happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I do have some residents that were not able to be here. The Pinewood Condominium Association would like to have me read a statement, and then one of our, another individual who was not able to have her statement entered in at our public hearing would also like me to read her statement tonight.
Thank you.
I will start with the first one, with the person who was not able to be here for our public hearing. It says, "Over the last year, the Pinewood Condominium residents and others have provided sound justification for our objections to rezoning 1088 South Court Street. I have these final comments for your consideration regarding this issue tonight. One, a rezoning should never be decided on a proposed use. These proposals can vanish immediately after zoning is modified. The zoning includes two existing occupied buildings. You must consider the possibility of the owner establishing multiple businesses on this property. Second, by definition, office and personal and professional services allow for multiple high-traffic uses such as medical, dental office, salon, health club, day spa, fitness facility, and more. This is one of our main objections, traffic and safety. Please review any and all potential uses that this district allows, whether permitted, conditionally permitted, or possibly considered a similar use by the planning commission. Third, the current city of Medina comprehensive plan is the only one in effect and should be followed until officially amended. And finally, good planning looks to the future. Please don't be shortsighted. Many travel within and into the city to work, shop at local businesses, dine at local restaurants, and enjoy the wonderful fence the city sponsors. The future of this hinges on your decision. It is your civic responsibility to protect the community. Do that now by denying this rezoning request. Respectfully, Patricia Ryan, 4254 Sharon Copley Road, Medina, Ohio." The second statement that I was asked to read tonight on behalf of the Pinewood Condominium Association. "In the past year, you have heard many reasons we oppose rezoning the lot at 1088 South Court to any commercial zoning. Even this most restrictive commercial zoning would permit uses that would negatively impact our residential property. The main focus of our opposition relates to traffic and safety issues. The CS zoning permits uses that will add another driveway and more traffic congestion to the area. Pinewood residents and visitors experience traffic and safety issues daily as we enter and exit our development onto South Court Street. We wish we could avoid South Court, but we have no other choice since we have no other access route out of Pinewood condominiums. We are anxious to have the Ohio Department of Transportation conduct the traffic study requested by the mayor and county officials. We believe it will validate our reasons for our opposition and lead to changes in traffic management that will ensure public safety on South Court Street. We still do not know why the city attorney asked you to approve this rezoning request, but we urge you to seriously consider all the arguments we have presented. Please do not vote, just avoid litigation or limit the city's liability. You have received emails from our residents, our relatives, visitors, expressing their opposition to the rezoning. We hope you have read them and given them careful consideration. These are the citizens, taxpayers, and voters of Medina that elected you to represent their interests and ensure their general welfare. Show them your commitment and concern for their safety and welfare. Do the right thing, and please vote to deny this rezoning request. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? I have one request, an email that was sent to me to read into the record for this, and at the same time, I've asked Ms. Patton, Ms. Patton, if you have anything, anybody emailed you, or Jared, if anybody on Facebook has emailed anything else. This is from Pat Walker of Savior Courthouse Committee at 231 South Broadway, Medina. Dear President, Mr. President of council, during the Medina City Council meeting on April 13th, the city mischaracterized the goal of Savior Courthouse Committee. The goal of the committee and its initiative petition is to allow the taxpayers to vote on the courthouse project. During the April 13th council meeting, the city stated that even if the initiative petition was unsuccessful, or successful, the county will go forward and tear down the white columned 1969 courthouse. The city and county are not taking into account that the county is unlikely to be able to afford the courthouse project without the $8 million contribution of the city, especially now in these rough economic times. The sales taxes and other income of the county are going to be less than earlier predicted. Other counties are already laying off people and are not going into debt for large construction projects. The initiative petition is going forward in a safe manner in these social distancing days. If you want to sign the initiative petition, please contact Pat Walker at 330-722-5567 or check the website for updates. Thank you for allowing this public comment. Is there anything you have, Mrs. Patton? No. Mr. Jared, is there anything that you have?
No, sir, no comments.
Thank you. Is anybody else wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 7520, ordinance 7620, ordinance 7720, resolution 7820, ordinance 7920, ordinance 8020, ordinance 8120, resolution 8220, ordinance 8320, ordinance 8420, and if approved, ordinance 8520.
Move to approve.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. To suspend the rules requiring three readings.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules for the three readings? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the suspended rules on the three readings?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yep.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Ordinance 7520, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2020-2021 Equipment and Asphalt General Paving Services Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
This is actually Mr. Pacoli.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual asphalt resurfacing program. The city's been served well over the last eight years using this program, and it's used for city streets, parking lots, as well as some of the roadways at the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further question or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yep.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 75-20 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 7620, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an engineering and surveying agreement with Cunningham and Associates, Inc. for the Spring Grove and North Broadway Bridge replacement projects.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton, now you.
Now me, thank you. The city last year received a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission for the replacement of the two bridges at Spring Grove and North Broadway. We conducted a qualification-based selection process to select the design engineer and have determined Cunningham and Associates to be the most qualified for this project and recommend that we award them this contract.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Ordinance 76-20 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 7720, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into Task Order Number Four to the agreement with Delta Airport Consulting for the professional services at the Medina Municipal Airport relative to the airfield remarking at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton, I think this is you.
It is, thank you. This is a follow-up. We previously have awarded the design agreement to Delta for the airport remarking. This Task Order Number Four will be for the construction administration and inspection. This contract is payable through the grant, 90%. The city is responsible for 10%.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 77-20 passes seven zero.
Resolution 7820, resolution accepting the 2020 Remote Technology Grant Project Award from the Supreme Court of Ohio to the Medina Municipal Court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved that it be added at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause in resolution. At Finance Committee today, the bailiff talked about this a little bit for us regarding receiving a grant to assist the bailiff's department in some remote technology, communicating with the, I guess, people on probation. This will enable them to communicate through the computer and through iPhones and have less people come into the court facility for these required visits, which was important at this time with the COVID virus. And the emergency clause is requested because the grant, I think, is expected very soon. Is there any other questions or comments on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne. Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yeah.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Resolution 78-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 7920, an ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Medina and Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for the public, for the police sergeants, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mary Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it's okay with you and the council, I'd like to address all three of the ordinances because it applies really to all of them. So the wages in each of the three contracts were awarded as, we went to fact finding with this, for all three of the police unions. And the wages awarded were 2.5% in 2020, which will be retroactive back to the first of the year, 2.5% in 2021, and 2.75 in 2022. You may recall, this is the same wage proposal that we made with the Teamsters earlier this year. And the fact finder awarded that in the city's favor, and that was accepted by both the council and the union. The shift differential, in addition to the wages, the shift differential for each of the three bargaining units was raised from 35 cents per hour for 2.50 cents per hour. In the patrol officer's contract, the officer gets a 5% stipend to be the officer in charge, and they used to have to work the entire shift. That was changed to two hours or greater. The holidays, if somebody was called in on a normally scheduled off holiday, they used to get time and a half for the work and then the eight hours holiday. And the fact finder felt that double time was more applicable for coming in for an unscheduled holiday. The educational benefit, all three contracts awarded college degrees. And what was added was military, serving in the military for three or more years with a honorable discharge. They get the same benefit, which is a biannual stipend for serving in the military, which we felt was fair for those who have served their country, our country. And then last but not least was the hospitalization. So the city currently pays 82%, I'm sorry, 84%, and the employee pays 16%. And those that take part in wellness get a 4% reduction, so they only pay 12%. Under all three agreements, the nonparticipants went from 16% to 20%. So the city pays 80% and the employee pays 20% for those not taking part in wellness. And if they take part in the wellness, it increased from 12% copay to 13%. And the other addition was if our healthcare premiums increase by 1% or more in either of the next two years of the contract, 2021 or 2022, then the employee share will go to 14% for those taking part in wellness. And the reason for the emergency clause, Mr. President and council members, is the sooner we pass this, first of all, they get the pay, but it's also that many less weeks and months that we have to redo the pension payments and back pay. So it's more expeditious for us to pass this with the emergency clause, all three of these, and I'd respectfully ask for your permission to do so.
Thank you. Any other additional comments and discussion?
Mr. President? Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to have to abstain from this particular ordinance due to I'm related to a sergeant on the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the ordinance or emergency clause? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yeah.
Yes.
Simpson.
Abstain.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1 abstention.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Abstain.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 79-20 passes 6-1 abstention.
Ordinance 80-20, an ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Medina and the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for patrol officers and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Any discussion on this ordinance or emergency clause? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 80-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 81-20, an ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Medina and Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for the communication officers and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause is requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Any discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Ordinance 81-20 passes 7-0.
Resolution 82-20, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with the City of Brunswick to file an application for grant assistance with the Ohio Department Services Agency for the fiscal year 2020 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program chip grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution, Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is to extend and redo our partnership agreement with the City of Brunswick to submit to the state of Ohio a request, an application for a new chip program. The partnership allows for the two individual municipalities to receive up to $350,000 per community. That goes a long way to help improve the housing stock for vulnerable households in the City of Brunswick and the City of Medina. We have been doing this for several years. There really isn't much change to the partnership agreement, otherwise to update it to present dates. The emergency clause is requested as the application to the state is due very soon, and we would like to be able to be efficient on that timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions regarding the emergency clause and/or the resolution? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yeah.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Resolution 82-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 83-20, an ordinance rezoning the property at 1088 South Court Street from R3 High Density Residential to CS Commercial Service.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Rose, I think you're on the planning commission. Do you have any update from the planning commission?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have any additional information other than to give a little bit of history. This is the third, I should say, rezoning classification that has been requested by the applicant to the planning commission. We reviewed this going back for over a year. The vote was 4-0 at the last planning meeting for this particular rezoning. The general consensus was that the CS was the most restrictive that could be used on this property. Requires any other changes other than an ATM or any of those personal services that are outlined in the CS, has to come back to planning for any authorization. There cannot be anything such as been brought up in the past as like an open pantry or a convenient food bar, something like that, to come in. That cannot happen with this. When it comes to the traffic, the general consensus is that the traffic is going to be something that the traffic is already going to be on Court Street. They're going to stop there to get their money on the way. They will not be adding to the traffic as it comes into this ATM. And lastly, it's been suggested that the access to and from the ATM be right turn only. In other words, you have to be heading north to get into the ATM, and you have to be heading south to get into the ATM. That way, we won't be blocking, there will be no traffic block, trying to make a left turn during rush hour and reducing the chances of guessing which way the driver is going. And that was the thought process that went through the members of the planning commission to make the recommendation.
Thank you. Is anybody else that has any comments on the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
Yes, thank you very much, sir. You know, I've received every email that every other of my colleagues on council has received from Pinewood Association residents. And I do, I sympathize with their dilemma of increasing the traffic on South Court Street in the morning and the afternoons. It is very heavy. This kiosk that's been requested, again, as Mr. Rose stated, this is the third request each time coming down. This is the most least intrusive and most restrictive of the rezoning requests that's been brought up. I had the opportunity this last weekend when I was out surveying some of the leftover storm damage to drive by the area again. I drive by it multiple times, but driving by again. And I see that the property at the south end of the Trillium Creek property has already started to be cleared for either additional housings. I heard it's going to be somewhat of an independent living or nursing facility, which is in Montville Township. So that also is going to increase the traffic load. And again, south in the Montville Township, it's all zoned commercial. And, you know, we anticipated that when Acme went in, that that whole area was going to explode with commercial properties opening. Acme hasn't come in yet, but at some point in time, I do believe that those properties will be built upon as for commercial use. And I agree, I hope that the state does do a study and comes up with funds as far as a grant to address the traffic concerns as far as widening and putting in turn lanes. I think that will happen. You know, we all remember prior to two years ago on North Court how congested that was. And it took years, literally my entire tenure on council, we talked about the North Court project. And it actually did become comminfration, and now it's beautiful. Hopefully, at some point in time, South Court will do the same. And again, I appreciate it. I sympathize with everybody that lives in Pinewood, all the other people that have the connecting streets onto South Court in that corridor. At certain times of day, it backs up just like in other areas of the city. I know that in the past, Trillium Creek has, when we initially turned down their first request for rezoning, there was talk about litigation. And I'm sure if this does not go through, And I'm I'm sure if if this does not go through, that that there may or may not be litigation talked about again. So as a representative for not not only my ward, but for the entire city, you know, I know in one of the letters that Mr. Shields just read that we shouldn't be looking at a fear of being sued as as a reason for voting yes or no on the issue. But I and it is, it is a very, very minor part of my decision. But it is something that I look at. And again, I know in the last year, a lot more people than the the Pinewood residents have concerns about this kiosk going in, not so much about the kiosk, but the traffic problems. And as Mr. Eddie said, that the the kiosk is is not going to add that much more problems to the to the area. The problem's already there. So for this zoning request, I am going to vote yes for the the rezoning request. And and again, I hope I hope the people of Pinewood and I hope the people that that agree with the Pinewood situation, understand my my reasoning for it. Again, my hopes and prayers as a council person, as a representative to the city, I will support traffic studies being done by the state and the county. And and hopefully, at some point in time, the this this will be addressed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Listen, a few things to correct, and and one of them is this request for rezoning, this is not the most restrictive zoning. The most restrictive zoning for this piece of property is what it is zoned now. Secondly, yep, there have been three ti- three times this has come before the city, this rezoning, and it had been rejected, but three times it has been rejected by the residents. So three times it's been here and three times the residents have said that they don't want the rezoning. And they have cited reasonable, responsible, well thought out, serious concerns. Think about it. The biggest investment you make, most people make, is in their residence. And your your home, maybe it's comparable to somewhat to like a tree. You know, things happen, trees can't move. Things happen around them. You buy a residence, and I believe when people buy it, they expect that they're going to get some level of security about what's going to happen that will impact on the quality of their life in their residence. And that's what I think we're required, we're required to do. And listen, when when Councilman Simpson drove down South Court Street to check the tornado damage, he probably drove by my house. I live on South Court Street. And to me, it is a, it is a misrepresentation of the of 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 that area to continually say it is a commercial corridor. It is no more a commercial corridor than a one stop shop at a one traffic light town. Most of South Court Street in the city, if you look at it, property by property, the vast majority is residential. Yep, there is a spot of commercial development just at the edge of town and in the township. Now, these people have made a an effort to convince us that this is not a good thing for them. When those, when when Pinewood was built, they were promised a second, a second entrance. That entrance never happened. They have one way out, and that one way is onto South Court Street. And they have given us a whole list of arguments of why this is not good for them. So when I look at it, not only is responsibility is their representative, but if you look at it visually, on one hand, we have, I think, seventy units full of real people who do not want this. And on the other hand, you have one cash machine. And as I have voted in the past, we have a responsibility to these people to do what's right, not to do what we think we have to do because of litigation. Litigation should not figure into this. We have a responsibility to do what is right. There's always the argument about private property rights. And that's true. But the people in Pinewood should have some private property rights as well. They are our constituents. They are real people. These arguments about nobody's going to stop there, just they're not going to come to town just to go there. That's not what the issue was. The issue is they don't want that piece of property rezoned contiguous to the only exit from where they live. And that makes a lot of sense. If we've listened to them, we have to have also heard what they said and do what's right. And so I'll vote against this rezoning, as I have voted against it every time it came up. Because the most restrictive zoning for this piece of property is not what has been requested, but it is what it is zoned now. And every time it has come here, every single person, every single residence from Pinewood has come and said that they do not want it rezoned. I will vote no.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any comments?
Mr. President.
Who's who said that? Oh, Mr. Shields.
Yes. I just wanted to add, Bill and I have been involved in this with the residents, and we we do represent them. It's my ward. I do want to say that this has been going on for probably over eighteen months. I I appreciate everybody that has been involved. Mr. Eddie and Trillium Creek agreed to sit down with the residents. We have tried to reach a compromise on maybe another entrance or combining entrances. It just in the end, we weren't able to do it with the way the property is situated right on the border of the city of Medina and Montville Township. Everybody has been professional, respectful, but in the end, I represent those sixty four condominiums, the owners of that complex, the residents that are there, over a hundred, the other people on the south end of town who are concerned about the traffic and just another driveway along there. So in the end, I will be voting no as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Huber because we've been voting on this a few times under a few different categories. And it's my understanding in this case that since the planning commission recommended for the rezoning, in order for this to pass council, a majority for the seven of council members has to vote for it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, that's unlike the other ones where we were going to vote differently from what the planning commission recommended. If we wanted to vote to overturn the planning commission's recommendation, we would have to vote, is it six to one or? Yeah, I think it's six to one to overturn the recommendation of the planning commission. Is that correct?
In order to overturn the recommendation of the planning commission, you have to have a super majority.
Okay, thank you. Okay, five to two. All right, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Will the clerk piece color roll any adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
No.
Hefinger.
No.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
No.
There was a no?
Negatory. No.
Thank you. All right, ordinance eighty three dash twenty fails two yeas.
Wait, wait, wait.
You gotta ask Mr. Shields.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shields. Sorry.
No.
Okay. So ordinance eighty three dash twenty fails two yeas, five nays.
Okay. Ordinance eighty four twenty, ordinance amending ordinance number one eighty seven nineteen passed November twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen, amendments to the twenty twenty budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Jerome?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed at the finance meeting earlier tonight, this is to appropriate funds that have been donated for construction of a restroom facility at Sam Macy Park.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Will the clerk piece color roll any adoption of the ordinance?
Wayne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty four dash twenty passes seven zero.
At this time, I entertain a motion to add ordinance eighty five twenty.
Move to add it to the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion on adding ordinance eighty five twenty to the agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I I know it says five thousand. I think we talked at FinX that we would be changing that to twenty five hundred.
That is correct. That'll be, it'll be twenty five when we read the ordinance, correct?
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. President, in looking at, in looking at this ordinance and in looking at the emergency clause, we've got a general reason for the emergency clause, which is public peace, health and safety. That is not going to pass muster as an emergency clause. We need to have a specific reason which we can add. So when we pass this ordinance, assuming you do, if you could do that subject to my approval, I can fix that, and then we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion about adding ordinance eighty five twenty? Will the clerk piece color roll in adding ordinance eighty five twenty to the agenda?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Order eighty five twenty, ordinance amount of expenditure of twenty five hundred dollars to Cups Cafe for COVID nineteen relief to the city of Medina residents.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Shields?
Mr. Wayne, are are we not going to add the emergency clause?
Yes, we're gonna add.
You can add the emergency clause. We just need to put in a specific reason as to why it's an emergency and put that in the ordinance. Would be something along the line of the fact that we're in the midst of the COVID nineteen epidemic now. The money is needed as soon as possible. That specific reasoning added to this language, in addition to the general health, safety and welfare language, will make this an appropriate ordinance.
So it'd be subject to the law.
I was gonna say, I'll move to add it. The emergency clause subject to final approval of law director is to the language.
My second includes the the emergency clause along with Mr. Shields' comments.
Any discussion on the ordinance and or the emergency clause? Will the clerk piece color roll and adopt from the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero, subject to the law directors approval.
Will the clerk piece color roll and adopt from the ordinance?
Hazel Mindy.
Well, I was doing it because we just, you just typed it there. We approved it on a financial.
Okay. Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty five twenty passes seven zero.
Council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you very much, sir. I I'd just like to 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 again publicly thank Justin Bill for introducing this this legislation for the what is now going to be a twenty five hundred dollar initial donation to Cups Cafe. Justin, thank you for all your your legwork in making this possible. I hope everybody's staying safe and 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 healthy, and we will get through all this. And again, thank you for all the administration, for the work you're doing during this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb, you look like you want to say something.
Oh, well, two things, I guess. One is Denny, Councilman Simpson, when I was in California a month or so ago, I found a T-shirt that says, Be Kind. And the next time we're together at a council meeting and we're not doing this online, I am going to bring my Be Kind T-shirt there for you because I have so much enjoyed your conversations over all the time we've spent together at council, reminding people that we are all human beings and we're all trying to get along and and especially now, you know, in these really difficult times. Those are good things to keep in mind. You know, as bad as this is, there are good things that come out of it. You know, maybe it is simply, you know, being together with, you know, with a partner or a spouse or spending more time with your children or maybe being more reflective. You know, but I am continually reminded of your, hey, you know what? As you're going about your day, think of other people and and just be kind. And I also want to thank Councilman Hazelton because she really was the engine, you know, in 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 this legislation, this idea. She was proactive. You know, she was concerned about people have enough to eat or can you deliver food and she, you know, she really, I was the caboose, I guess, but she was the engine to put this together and and it's good to have her on board doing those things and and caring about people in the community. So I appreciate she'd spend a lot of time. I know that because we had some conversations. This did not just, you know, hatch overnight. So that was a good thing. So thanks much, councilperson Hazelton. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by saying thank you to the Stevenson Foundation and the Miracle League donations to make sure that 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 restroom is a possibility here in our park. Also, thanks to Councilwoman Hazel Time for all of her work between last meeting and today, really, really going through and making sure that it's something that it's worthwhile of taxpayer monies to give to. And I'm asking right now, anybody that's out there that can also help and donate, please donate to Cups so we can get these this food, these these people out there to their doors. Even as much as the styrofoam containers, those cost money. They cost somebody to to make those and get those, so they can get them out to people. Those are part of it. Anything you can do to help. And, you know, I know Medina is stepping up. I read all these great stories online. I'm sharing them. I'm, you know, it it's awesome. Thank you, Medina, for what you're doing, for each other, for 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 us all. We're all a community together, and I'm so proud to be a part of it.
Thank you. Any other additional council comments?
Just a thank you to everyone on council for working with me, giving me the great suggestions and the initiative and ideas that I needed to really round this legislation out and get it to a place where we could all support it. So I appreciate all of your help. I appreciate your support on it, and I'm really looking forward to it going right out into Medina City. But of course, especially more than one, because those are my peeps. So I'm excited for everyone to get everything that they need and make things a little bit better during the COVID crisis. So thank you.
Thank you. And just just to be, if you remember, our first responders fighting every day to help those who cannot help themselves, who contracted the virus, those in the hospitals on the front lines. They're taking a very high risk at those jobs, and they're doing a great job at what they do. And we appreciate everything that they do. And we also pray for those who have lost loved ones during this time, especially around Medina County. And, you know, our condolences go out to their families. Is there anybody else that has any council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
One more thing that I forgot. Again, hats off to Kathy Patton, all of us on council. I I again, none of us could do our jobs as efficiently as we as we can without her help. Kathy, hats off.
Fill him a hat.
Mr. Rose, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Kathy. I know it's like herding cats, but you do an excellent job of it. So thank you for keeping us in line. I just a little bit of, I guess, good news, if you will, or some some hope, probably is a better way of doing it. As most of you know, I have relatives who live in the Normandy province of Italy, and they have gone through the everything that we are going through here. And there is a very bright light at the end of the tunnel. And no, it's not the rapture or anything like that, but everything does turn out well in the end. They're they're starting to turn return to normal. We're blessed, and my family has not been impacted by it at all. And so there, as long as you follow the rules, we should be okay. And it's good to see that we are coming out of this very soon. And just follow the rules, and we will be okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.